So I'm calling this meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Since we are still a mostly remote meeting, I'm skipping the Pledge of Allegiance for tonight and we will start it as soon as we start having in-person meetings, which hopefully will be the next meeting. Right now, we have Doug Baird. That seems a bit lonely. I would like an approval of the agenda. I do have additions. Stan is bringing to us the food service quotes and meal pricing that need to be set. So we're going to add that to Agenda Item 8. So with those additions, could I have somebody make a motion to? Thank you, Len. Any seconds? Thank you, Maria. Sorry, I sort of jumped the gun, I guess. Does anyone else have any changes or additions or attractions to the agenda? Okay, I don't see anyone. I will call a question then. Please say yes if you approve the agenda or hold your hand up. Bruce, are you voting yes? Okay. Your pencil's moving so fast, I can't see it. Sorry. Okay, thank you. That was unanimous. We now have approval of the minutes from 6:02. If I could have a motion, please. Okay, Andrea, thank you. And Len, seconds. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
I do.
Yep, go ahead.
If I may. Now I got to find it. Under Committee Business, Personnel, it says the next meeting was April 7, 2021. And we can't go back in time. I think that was a movie at some point. But it should say the next meeting was July 7.
Yeah, thank you. I read that over and didn't get to it all. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the minutes? Please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. The minutes have passed. Now we will get to public input and announcements. I do have a statement from Karen McCullough that she wanted read. So of course I... So I will take this opportunity to read that for her and then I will turn to the other public speakers. "Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the librarian at Mill River. This spring, our faculty had the opportunity to participate in a book group that we called 'Disrupting Racism.' We read the book, 'The Black Friend,' and discussed the ways we see systemic and overt racism affecting our schools and communities. All of our students need to be seen, heard, and valued. Flying a flag will not begin to address the deeper problems in our schools and communities, but it's a way to show that we support student voice and acknowledge the struggles and injustice that BIPOC folks deal with every day. I look forward to seeing our schools make even more changes..." Or, yeah, "to make more changes to transform our curriculum using an equity lens, but a flag is a good place to start." Thank you. That was Karen McCullough, our library tech integrationist. And now I can turn to Dave to introduce the first speaker on the list.
You bet. Thank you, Adrian. We have... I'll just read the full list so everyone has a sense of the order. We have seven individuals sign up for public comment. Richard Lee, Andy Richards Peal, Nan Dubin, Ken Fredette, Joan Latuca, Gail Gillum, John McKenna. So those are the folks who've signed up. I don't see Richard Lee with us. I'm trying to look through my roster of names that are with us. And I don't... There was a phone number that was on and disappeared. So it looks like we don't have Richard, Adrian. Would it be okay to move on to Andy?
Yeah, if he comes back on, we'll just put him on in a different...
Great. So we've got Andy, the Nan, and Ken, just to keep track of early order.
Okay. Andy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Andy Richards Peal. I'm a resident of Shrewsbury and a former school board member. I'm speaking this evening because of the Agenda Item Student Flag Poll Request, which is a request to raise a flag, I presume, on the Mill River Flag Poll. I think it's important to review how we got to this point. The Board at its meeting on June 17, 2020, received, discussed, and verbally approved an equity plan pending several changes we had requested. The plan represented a year and a half of work by the Equity Committee. It was composed of staff, parents, board members, teachers, and students. The Board, in the same evening, then went on to take up the students' request to raise the Black Lives Flag, Black Lives Matter Flag at Mill River. Approving this request, eight yes, one no, one abstain. Then at the Board meeting on July, there was just one meeting that month, 35 people spoke about the flag raising. Thirty were in favor, five opposed. I personally was quite surprised by the number of current and former Mill River students who spoke. Many of them confirmed they neither felt safe nor supported at the school. Reinforcing this are the results of the biannual Safe School and Risk Survey, which has continued to show that the students of color, low-income, LGBTQ, and other marginalized groups do not feel welcome, supported, or safe at our schools. Research clearly shows that students in these conditions do not achieve at their highest levels. To put it simply, our schools have not been serving all of our students. Raising the Black Lives Matter Flag is a strong statement to our students and our staff of the district that the district is working to welcome all students, providing them with the support they need to access all of their education. I realize that there are citizens who believe that only the American flag and the Vermont State flag should fly from our school flag poles. If this is a stumbling block to showing the district's support to marginalized students, I would suggest we look at Rutland Regional Medical Center for an alternative. I think everyone has seen their very large banner supporting Pride Month and welcoming everyone to their facility. I believe a large banner at Mill River of similar size would send a powerful statement of the school's support to all students. I realize such decisions don't come without controversy and resistance. Change has never come easily, and our history is strewn with repeated examples of this. During the last year and a half, the Board has approved and implemented an equity plan, an equity policy, and procedures to request flag raising. Together, these actions begin to initiate very important changes. To this Board, I say, recognize that change is not easy, and it brings controversy, but understand you are doing this to support and empower all our students. I encourage you to continue to lead the change by making a strong statement of support. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Andy. Mr. Lee, I see that you have joined us, and we could skip you, but you're here now. So you have three minutes. You're muted. Yeah.
Where is he? I don't see him. Oh, my God, right down here.
Mr. Lee, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. After watching the 6:00 meeting, I have grave concerns as to the intentions of some members. When did it become necessary to vote to say the Pledge of Allegiance before a school board meeting? Who finds it acceptable to disrespect the flag of our nation? When did it become acceptable for some to dishonor the lives of my friends and the many people who served and died to make this the best country in the world, to be disgraced by people who do not respect them or America? At the same time, discussions of flying a BLM flag on our school in the introduction of critical race theory in our schools is being promoted. It is upsetting that members would support Marxists who burned buildings, assault and kill, and loop businesses of people of color, the same organization that collected $93 million and didn't spend a single penny supporting people of color. Oh, one founding member did help herself to millions to purchase three homes and then resign. Why is it that intelligent, educated people of color denounce this racist agenda? Why is it that people with common sense see the level of racism being pushed on their children and the destruction it causes? You cannot lift some up by beating others down because of the color of their skin. This is pure racism. We are failing our students miserably right now. Our school's right at the bottom. Why? We need to root out all evil from those that have contact with our children. We need every taxpayer that contributes to the exorbitant cost of $18,000 to educate students to stand up to this radical movement to destroy the lives of our children and eventually the last beacon of hope around the world, America. We need to begin to educate students with reading, writing, and arithmetic, along with history. These are the things needed for the success of our nation. BLM, burn, loot, and murder, a proven movement of chaos and destruction. The Pledge of Allegiance, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. If you do not support America, you cannot properly educate our children. We need education and not indoctrination in our schools. The only flag that should fly on any school in America is the American flags. Our freedoms are brought to us by the brave Americans who honor the red, white, and blue. May God bless America. I hope God sheds some sense on people out to destroy us, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Adrian, you're muted, just so you know.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lee. Sorry, I said that quietly. Nan, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Nan Dubin, and I wish to once again voice my support for flying the Black Lives Matter Flag at Mill River because Black Lives Matter. We can't pretend that racism doesn't exist. We can't pretend that Black people enjoy the same rights and privileges and security that white people do. If I were to be pulled over for speeding, which I would never do, but if I were to be pulled over, I would be annoyed. I would be mad at myself for getting a ticket. I would be thinking maybe my insurance was going to go up, but I would not be worried that I might die during that traffic stop. Black people do not have that same confidence. I think it is important for us to support our students, all of our students, to help them understand that we see them, we support them, and that we are their allies. And that is the purpose of flying the Black Lives Matter Flag at Mill River. Thank you.
Thank you, Nan. Appreciate it. Ken Fredette.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. I'm Ken Fredette from Wallingford.
Ken, can you adjust your volume? You're very quiet.
Well, maybe it's...
Which is unusual.
Much so, yeah.
Thanks. I'd like to speak...
No.
Really? I don't know.
Maybe you're not plugged in.
Can you hear me now? How about now?
Lose the headset if you can.
The computer, can you hear me now?
We can.
All right. Thank you. Here, take this off. Can you restart my clock?
I will do that. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Ken Fredette from Wallingford. I'd like to speak briefly tonight about board retreats, just to change the subject a little bit. I know the concept caused some angst with newer board members recently. I served as a board member for 20 years and in that time attended many workshops, training sessions, conferences, and retreats, all out of the public eye. That is not to say we were trying to hide anything. The fact is that there were no activities that the public would be concerned about or even interested in. We were simply working to increase our toolset in order to better serve that public. One memory that happened at one retreat has always stuck with me when the facilitator surprised us, and I hope I'm not spoiling any surprises here, by starting asking us to say something about ourselves that not many people would know. One man told us he collected antique dolls. A woman told us she was fluent in seven languages. There was even a guy who wanted a living as a commercial diver in Vermont, you know? Go figure. But it was a great icebreaker. You have a diverse board here. That is a good thing. You do and you will disagree. That's also good. You know, embrace those things and you will produce good works. So go to your retreat, ready to get to know your colleagues a bit in a semi-relaxed atmosphere, and knowing that every nose scratch and every word stumbled over isn't going to be recorded for posterity. And you all and the district will benefit from this. I wish you all well in this journey. And just because I have a little extra time, I will weigh in and say I support displays of inclusion and statements of inclusion. And keep fighting a good fight. Always think about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a resident of Wallingford. My son and daughter attend Mill River. I'm also a teacher in this school district, working in Clarendon and next year probably in Clarendon and Shrewsbury. I hope that your discussions will result in the displaying of the Black Lives Matter Flag. Our public school system, I think, has a responsibility to its students to show them a glimpse of our world, not just the little world that we live in, but the world that they might see. It's our responsibility to let them see what they might not frequently see or hear at home or even in our small towns. And letting them see that isn't necessarily a... It doesn't necessarily lead to some kind of change of them taking over... of the school or a new idea taking over their family ideas. But public education should be a safe place for our students to view the world that might be unfamiliar and to discuss and learn about it respectfully. It's not about being against an individual's core beliefs or how parents choose to raise their children. It's about preparing young people to be thoughtful, productive citizens. And to do that, education should be inclusive of ideas that are current and important to the students that are trying to make sense of it all. I realize that this certainly is something that a lot of you may not have ever encountered before and certainly not in your own education, but I do think it's important to face something that might cause this discomfort, and I hope that you will decide to give... to make decisions that acknowledge the voices of the students that we are serving right now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joan. We have Gail Gillum on the list.
Adrian, I don't see Gail by video, but we do have a phone number with us that I'm not sure who that belongs to, so Gail may be with us by phone.
Hi, I am here. I've been having real difficulty with the YouTube thing. It's like delayed, so I've just shut it off. So, thank you, everyone. Adrian answered my first question. I was wondering when the meetings would be in person again, and I guess it would be the next meeting, she said.
I believe so.
Okay. And then I was looking at the application questions for the principle that we need for Shrewsbury, and I had a question on number two. It states, "Tell us any personal and professional experiences you've had that would help you help us to fulfill our district equity goals, which are based upon providing every student opportunities and access that they need when they need them, with adult needs coming secondary to the student needs." Who is that adult? Is the adult a teacher? Is the adult a parent? Is the adult an administrator? I'm curious on that. You don't have the answer now, of course, but I will follow up with an email because I'd like to know the answer to that. My other question was, I went back and forth a little bit with Ann on the agenda. I didn't realize that I have to tell my topics. I didn't realize that for speaking or public input. I thought that we kind of had free rein to speak on whatever we wanted. My other question was, if we're going to be able to speak on other Agenda Items throughout the agenda, is it just only now during public or is it as we go through the Agenda Items? I see that there's quite a few commenters on the line tonight, which is unusual because usually there's only a couple extra people from the town because of the flag poll. I guess my question on the flag is, the student that is asking for this flag to be flown, do they have to be a student or have they graduated already? And then Ken touched on the retreat. The retreat just can't have any school board topics. I mean, if you guys want to get together and, you know, get to know each other and all that, that's fine by me, but you can't be talking about polls and you can't be talking about surveys. I know that Mr. Yount mentioned at the last meeting that he was going to look into that and come back with a final answer, so I hope that answer is coming in the meeting tonight. And that's all I have, so thanks again.
Thank you, Gail.
Yep.
John McKenna.
Hi, everybody. John McKenna from Clarendon, a former board member. Probably won't come as any surprise to anybody here that I'm going to talk to you about my support of the Black Lives Matter Flag flying at the school. I was very much in support of it when it first came around last year at about this time. I'm still very much in support of it. You're going to hear a lot of people talk about Black Lives Matter being a Marxist organization. It's really much as much of an organization as it is a movement, first of all, which a lot of people don't understand. The fact that a couple of people who were involved in it in the early stages, having gone through some training that may have been... had a Marxist slant to it, does not make it a Marxist organization. Black Lives Matter is merely asking people to recognize that Black Lives Matter too. There's sort of an implied "too" on the end of that, whereas a lot of people see the word "only" in front of it, and that's far from the case. This movement started when a person who killed... a police officer who killed a Black man was acquitted, and it has taken off from there as a reminder to folk that Black and Brown people and people of color in general face different obstacles and different treatment at the hands of a lot of different people in our society, including the police. Recent surveys of state of Vermont's traffic stops have shown that it happens here. You watch the news and unless you're willfully ignoring the information that's being given to you, it's hard to detect that. And I think the flying of the Black Lives Matter Flag at the schools is an important step, and this is just a step, in my opinion, towards showing all of our students, the staff, the faculty, and our community members and the greater community at large that Mill River is a supportive and welcoming place. And I urge you all to vote in favor of flying the flag at Mill River. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I don't have anyone else on our list, Dan or Dave? Gosh, no, losing it.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just forget names. Or Ann, did anyone join after John? Because I've already read Karen's statement.
No, I don't have any other names, Adrian.
Okay. Thank you. I guess...
Adrian.
Would you like to address any of the questions?
Sure, that's not what I was going to speak on. If it's okay, I'll speak just a quick statement, then I'd be happy to respond to two questions I heard from Mrs. Gillum, although I know that the Board is supposed to hear comment and not necessarily respond to comment, but I'm happy to do so in my capacity. First, I just wanted to ask if we could remind our public commenters who've joined us after this period is over if you can leave this meet and join us on the YouTube. That way, the screen is just less cluttered as the Board is doing their business. Second, to get to the two questions that I heard specifically, one was about the dialogue that the Board was having around the concept of a retreat, and I said that I would find the statutory information and get back to the Board. Actually, that occurred a little bit later in that same board meeting because as we were floundering around a little bit with thinking, I shared the nature of the statute, which basically is that the Board has the ability to get together in a non-meeting format for social events and training programs very specifically. If the Board is doing work that will lead toward future action that the Board will take, those need to be public and warned meetings. So that's our distinction. Social and training can occur in private. Anything that leads toward future work needs to be public. The other question was related to our... some of just the applicant interview questions that we have, and one had to do with experience and background in supporting students and making sure that they get what they need and a statement that student needs become... that student needs come before adults. And I think it goes without saying that I can probably speak for all the members of our faculty and staff and our Board that that's something that we believe, and that's that student needs come before adult needs. It's very common in the educational field to use phrases like "students first" or whatever is best for kids. And so it's just important for us, as people are considering applying with us, for us to make sure that we state that that's an expectation, that we don't put our own needs as educators above the needs of students. We are here to serve our students first and foremost. So that's the best answer I could provide on that. Thank you, Adrian.
Jesus. Thank you very much. Now we'll go to Committee Business and start with Personnel. Len.
Yes, there we go. We... Our last meeting was the beginning of the month. Just a couple of updates. Our next meeting is July 7. We're working on the superintendent evaluation. Those board members who haven't returned it to me yet, which so far is 10, please get that in the mail. That's just a slight little dig. Thank you very much. Or if there's an issue, let me know because folks have done that as well. Otherwise, I expect to get it in my mailbox, and I don't get a lot of mail, so I like to get mail. Also, we are going to continue our work on the exit survey and interviews, and as I said, our next meeting is July 7. Thank you.
Policy.
We continue to work on the transportation policy, and again, we're waiting on another revision of that, which is fine. And our next meeting is... looks like the 13th at 5:30.
Okay, thank you very much. Community engagement.
I will not go over the difference between community engagement and community conversation for a change, just to help us move along, but if you're curious, there is a description in our... a good description that Ann took down in our last minutes. So the next meeting will be on... the next community engagement meeting, that is a committee meeting with board members with a set agenda, will take place on the second Tuesday in June, which is... I mean, July, excuse me, which is the 13th. And the next community conversation is actually coming up next week on Monday, the 21st, and the board members who will be present at that, barring any unforeseen circumstances for them, will be Adrian, Asha, Matt, and Andrea. And there should be an announcement coming out about that shortly, so keep an eye out for that, and we hope that people can come if they're interested. And we hope that people can come if they're interested. And we, we're going to talk about, somebody remind me, we brought it up at the meeting this week. If, if in the absence of any other pressing issues that anybody brings up, we are going to talk about, help me with this, those of you who are at the meeting.
Aren't we going to talk about emails and
No, that's the, that's the community. I, I believe that's the, that's the actual committee meeting.
Okay.
Transportation, was that possibly something we were talking about? That was it? Okay. Well, we'll be talking about transportation and buses. And, and if anybody has questions or, or things to share about that, please join us. Thank you so much. And that'll be 6:30 on Monday night. And please send an email to communityengagement@millriverschools.org if you would like a link to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Um, finance, Liz.
Good evening, everyone. We have the following payroll and pay orders for consideration and approval. Um, I'll do payroll first. Date of June 4th, we have special payroll in the amount of $18,725.35. We have regular payroll in the amount of, I'm sorry, dated June 4th, in the amount of $621,722.63. We have stipends dated June 11th in the amount of $1,616.29. And lastly, for regular payroll dated June 16th, we have a pay order in the amount of $5,254.66 for a grand total of $647,318.93. And we have the following pay orders from the general fund. We have a pay order in the amount of $1,874,416.91. We have a pay order for officials in the amount of $1,818. We have a pay order also from the general fund in the amount of $13,762.9. From ASP, which is after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of $3,394.42. And from our food program, we have a pay order in the amount of $19.95 for a grand total of $1,893,411.37. And I move that we approve and accept payroll and pay orders as presented.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Sam. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Doug, did you have anything to add to? You're muted.
Oh, there we go. Okay, um, now, nothing to worry about. Everything looked to be pretty basic. Um, the amount seems to be kind of high from the payroll side of it. I think a lot of it is because uh the last paychecks maybe doubled up to uh, to give somebody the money to work with until uh September comes along. But everything seems to be okay.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor approving the pay orders and the amount that I can't repeat because I lost track and when you were talking. Uh, please raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you very much.
And I'll just add that the finance committee next meets on Monday, June 28th at 4:30.
Okay. Did you say 4:30?
I did.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we have a discussion of the month of July meeting schedule. And um, I guess I don't know what the administration is suggesting. We've, we have combined our meetings um in July and, and usually just gotten rid of the first one because it usually falls around July 4th. And I guess the, the question is open if that's what we want to do this year. Um, anybody have any comment on that?
Could you actually, Adrian, would you mind repeating what you said?
I said, we frequently um do not have the first July meeting. There have been years when we have met in the middle and had a meeting on the second, second um Wednesday of July, but sometimes that's problematic because of other meetings that have been scheduled. So um, my suggestion would be that we just skip the first meeting. Um, to give everyone a break for the summer, but um I'm open to hearing all comments.
So the first meeting would be July 7th, correct?
That's a tough week because a lot of people go away that
Yeah, I'm in Maine that whole week. So, as long as we understand that some of us might not be there, but I was just trying to get my date straight, like where it was, so I'm looking at the calendar right now.
Okay, yeah, it would leave us just with um a meeting on, oh shoot, what is the? On the 21st.
21st.
Which is, you know, sort of, uh, you know, it's a good time to start working into the end of summer. Yes, does anyone have any objections to us canceling the July 7th meeting? Ken.
Can I just ask a question?
You can. Go ahead, Len.
Um, Maria, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Um, I was just going to ask in terms of the flag proposal, if we need to have that decided by the next meeting. And in that case, we do need to, if, if we don't come to a decision tonight, we will need to have another meeting
Good question.
on the schedule.
Dave, you're looking at the timing of the flag proposal on this one?
Yeah, so the, the policy that the board approves states that um after hearing a, a request, like you will tonight, that you need to make a decision within the next two board meetings. Yeah, so it's not explicit about the next two originally scheduled meetings. It's just the next two board meetings. So conceivably, if you cancel the 7th, you've got July 21st. And then whatever that first one in August is, I'm not sure of the date, but those would be your next two.
That, that was my question. So thanks, Maria.
Okay. Um, I guess, does that change anyone's way of thinking? Nobody had objected to the idea of canceling the 7th. I mean, my son is here visiting. I'd love not to be sitting in a board meeting. Doug, you unmuted yourself. Did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, all right, then um seeing no objection, we will cancel the meeting on the 21st. Or I mean, on the 7th and, and we will meet again on the 21st as a full board. Well, actually, we'll meet on the 24th of this month because we have our retreat.
Can I just say for public, because I had said that um we would meet on the 7th for the Personnel Committee, um, that, that we will be on the 21st. Because I'm assuming David will probably need some things done by then. So uh, the next Personnel Committee meeting will be July 21st at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Len. That was a good catch. Um, now we have number seven, acceptance of fuel oil bid. And I'm assuming Stan will be handling that.
Hmm, who's Stan? Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I received the bids late uh yesterday afternoon, so I sent out the materials uh today in an email. I wasn't sure if you guys would have a, a chance to look at them. But um, we sent out the bids for uh fuel oil and diesel for the buses. Um, and we received two bids back. Uh, they're from probably our biggest vendors in the area. Uh, for the uh fuel oil bid, we received a, a bid from Champlain Valley for a fixed price of $2.30 a gallon for all our schools. And they also had another option of, of doing a, a variable pricing based on rack plus 15 cents, which would be capped at $2.55. Um, Irving Heating Oil, uh, their bid submitted was a fixed price of $2.53 and a half cents. Uh, after talking with uh, with Gary, our facilities director, Gary Marcy, uh, we came to the conclusion to recommend to the board to accept the bid from Champlain Valley uh plumbing and heating for a fixed price of $2.30 a gallon for the FY '22 year. So I would uh propose that uh the board make a motion to accept the bid from Champlain Valley for FY '22.
I'll enter a motion to Andrea, thank you. And Samantha is seconding. Does anyone have any comments before we vote? The great price, Stan. Okay, I will call the question then. All in favor of accepting the Champlain Valley um fuel oil bid? Please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Stan, you have your approval.
Okay, uh, the second part of the bid was the diesel fuel for the uh, for the buses. And uh, again, we only received two bids uh on that one. Champlain Valley did not bid a fixed price for the diesel. Uh, they bid a variable price uh which is rack plus of 12 cents. Currently, that price is $2.45 uh as of today. Uh, Irving Heating Oil uh bid a, did bid a fixed price on the diesel fuel for next year of $2.66. And they also did a variable pricing, which was the same as Champlain Valley, which was uh the rack plus 12 cents. Um, again, with consultation from Gary Marcy, he and I came to the conclusion that we kind of like to stay conservative and know what our number will be against the budget for the upcoming year. So we recommended going with the Irving bid of $2.66 for FY '22. So uh, if the board can make a motion to accept the bid from Irving for $2.66 for FY '22, that would be great.
Okay, is somebody Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Liz. Does anybody have any comments? Sorry, Len, I didn't see in time. Um, does anyone have anything to add? Okay, um, I will call the question. Will we accept the diesel fuel bid from Irving Oil? Please raise your hand. Okay. You have your approval on that, Stan. Would you like to now um deal with the food service and meal pricing?
Um, sure.
Or do you want to go into the tax anticipation note first? Because either way.
Yeah. Well, we can do Well, we can do the tax anticipation note. Okay, um, the tax anticipation note that we uh uh request of our bank, which is People's United Bank, uh is, you know, for a line of credit for FY '22 to help uh fund the gap between uh the beginning of the year and the time we receive our tax money. Um, we requested a line of $3,600,000, which was approved by People's Bank. And they also, it, part of the note, they offered a interest rate of 1.5% on that, on those funds. Uh, we need to, the board needs to adopt a resolution. They need to adopt the resolution for a tax, a tax anticipation note line of credit with People's United Bank for $3.6 million and that the board authorizes the district treasurer and the business manager to request advances under the credit line no only, with no other authority given to us. And that would be the motion that I would um like to have the board make.
Okay. Does anybody make that motion and you don't have to repeat it? Okay, Liz, who's making that motion? Um, will someone second? Thank you, Asha. Um, does anyone have anything to say? I'm, I'm impressed they're giving us, you know, gee, a whole, a whole point amount. Like, wow, wow.
Yeah, the point two for like saving, so.
That's something, I would guess. Um, does anybody have any? No, okay, I will call the question if we um will accept the, the um motion for, for anticipation. Please raise your hand. Okay. Go ahead, Stan.
Okay. Uh, the next item I have is the uh approval of our, of our food service contract with Lexington Independence. Um, last year was uh the first year of the, of the contract with Lexington. Um, but because it is a contract really connected with federal dollars, you can only do a one-year contract uh with a vendor and, but you can attach renewals to that contract up to five years. So this will be the uh first year of the renewal. And I would be looking for a motion from the board uh to authorize the superintendent or his designee to approve or sign the contract with um Lexington Independence for the FY '22 uh school year.
Does somebody make a motion? Okay, thank you, Doug. And Sam has seconded. Um, any comments on, on this? Nope. Okay, I'll call the question of approving the food service contract with Lexington. Please raise your hand if you approve. Hey. Go ahead, Stan.
And last on the list is we need to set uh the meal pricing for FY '22 for adult breakfasts and adult lunches. Um, we do not need to set that for the students next year since they will still be um, uh, free under the uh uh federal grant. Uh, so for FY '22, uh, for adult breakfast, we recommend staying the same price of $2.50. And for the lunch, we asked for an increase uh from the $3.85 that was charged uh this past school year to uh $4 for the FY '22 year. And that's an increase that we are required to do under a calculation that the feds give you for a calculator that you are charging enough for the adult meal.
Okay, there's not really any choice. Are we will you make that motion? Okay, Sam and Liz seconded. Um, anyone have any comments? Okay, I will call that question then. Will we change our meal prices um as described in the motion? Please raise your hand if you approve. Okay, all right, Stan. Now, you also wanted um approval, perhaps to have me be able to sign for a propane and wood chip bid? Was that the?
That was, yeah, what I had emailed you about. Uh, me and Gary were talking about that today. Um, we weren't able to get the, the wood chip or the propane bid out in time for this meeting. And we would like to get that out within the next week. And if you skip, obviously, if the July 7th meeting is not going to be um around, um, due to the timing issues where we got to respond within 24 hours of these bids when we get them, uh, we would like the, maybe the board to, the board to authorize either you or somebody else to uh, that we could confer with on our bids and that they would uh give us authorization to accept them.
I would make, I would make the motion that um Adrian have the power to sign off on those bids as required.
Thank you, Len. Is there a second? Um, BJ seconded. Thank you. Um, does anyone have any other comments? Because I, I think that's a, a good idea. You don't want to lose a bid. Okay, I will call that question then. All in favor of allowing me to, to confer and sign off on um the wood chip and propane bid. Okay, thank you very much. Stan, have we done everything you needed?
Can I just ask, Adrian, when you approve it and stuff, can you forward what you finalized off to the board so we know for next meeting?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Um, sorry, Stan.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, then we have the student flag poll request for board consideration. And I'm going to ask Dave to um sort of lay out the process that um, that we basically laid out in our, in our um policy and, and how he's gone through the application for flying the flag and how it came to us. And then we'll go to Reese to, to describe her, her request.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you, Adrian. So as, as Adrian has shared, we do have uh Reese Eldert-Moore with us tonight. Reese will be um discussing her request and, and presenting information um to you and probably responding to any questions you may have after that. But in terms of process, if we flashback, you know, it was uh roughly a year ago that the board made um decisions related to flag poll requests. And those decisions um were paused due to the determination to construct a policy around what needs to go into flag poll requests. And you as a board approved that policy and I forget the exact day, but it was late fall, if I remember correctly. That policy in really general terms lays out the criteria that a request needs to meet in order to be eligible to be considered by the board. Um, my responsibility in that is to accept any requests that come in, review them against the criteria, provide feedback to the individual or individuals about whether they met the criteria or not. And if, if something does meet the And if something does meet the criteria for you as a board to consider it, to pass that on to you and prepare you to hear the request. And that's where we are tonight. So, board members, you received, yesterday, you received a copy of the checklist that I use just to assess the request that comes in, just to indicate whether it meets the criteria or not. You received a copy of the actual request. And then you received a copy of our policy that just outlines the details. Reese actually, as the request store, received the same information after I informed her that it did meet the criteria and would be coming to you. And then jumping just a bit ahead, you have the option tonight. You could engage in discussion about this evening. You also could choose and say, you know what? We've heard the request tonight. We're not going to engage in any discussion this evening. We'll have that discussion at our next board meeting. You've really got some options in that regard. What you don't have an option on is the board does need to make a decision in order to be in accordance with the policy within the next two board meetings. Meaning, you could do it at the next one. You could do it two from now or, you know, whatever that timing looks like. So that's the gist of it. I would gladly turn over to Reese Aldert-Moore at this point in time to share with you her request. And then, Adrian, if it's okay, I'll turn it back to you to just manage any questions and answers.
Yep, that's absolutely fine. Reese, you have our attention.
Hello. Thank you for having me here tonight. You all have my request. So I have some new information on why this is important to me. And not just me, but every single other student of color in our school district, not in our school district, people everywhere. It was about a year ago that I last came here to ask that the district raise the Black Lives Matter flag in support of the movement for black lives. First, after you said yes to a group, first, after you said yes, a group of angry and scared white people with a specific anti-equity agenda came forward and challenged you, your decision, and used me for their own campaign of hate. As a result, my family and I were threatened to the point to where we had to move out of the area. If that alone isn't enough evidence of why we need to take a stand against racism, I don't know what is enough to convince you. Second, as the racial disparities in education continue to grow and it becomes clear that schools, including Mill River, have failed in their mission to cultivate students who are ready to be global thinkers and doers, people around the state are pushing for more equitable educational opportunities. Tonight's anti-critical race theory protest at the fairgrounds is just more evidence of why we must make, sorry, of why we must make our position known on these matters. With the war on black lives, Mill River must do better. As a district that has no leadership of color, in fact, I need to point out that this is, once again, a room full of white people making decisions about black lives and black struggles with none of us able to do more than beg you to see us. I do hope you choose to do better. And about Marxism? Marxism usually means analyzing social change through an economic lens with the assumption that the rich and the poor should become more equal. Black Lives Matters, Black Lives Matters emphatic support for gender identity politics sets it apart from historical Marxism. And the goals listed on its website do not appear to be expressly anti-capitalist, which would arguably be a Marxist identifier. This quote is from Poliphact, a nonpartisan organization dedicated to sorting through rumors and rhetoric to find the truth. "The rhetoric that I have heard over the last year that Black Lives Matter is a Marxist organization, a terrorist group, and so many other false and exaggerated claims must end. This fake news will not end until schools do better to educate and explain what the movement for black lives actually is. It's a cry for help and a quest for solidarity in ending the structural and systematic racism that prevents us from seeing ourselves in our school and in our community. Raising this flag is a sign of hope that maybe we actually do matter in this school. If we truly cannot have liberty and justice for all if we do not uplift the voices of the oppressed and ensure safety for the students who are not being heard." I just want to say one more thing about waiting to vote on this policy. Mill River is already behind. It has been more than a year since this process began. And the fact that we are still debating and using old disproven arguments like the Marxist one that indicates as a community, we have a long way to go. It is unlikely that you as white people will ever feel 100% comfortable stepping boldly into an anti-racist position. I get it. Going against the norm is hard. But the longer you wait, the longer students of color and LGBTQIA+ students suffer while we wait to see whether or not you can see past white discomfort and ignorance long enough to do something that we have asked. If students really can't come first, please stop waiting. Thank you.
At this point, I will open the discussion. I don't want to leave it without any barriers to go around. I would say if anyone wants to make a comment and where they sit on this proposal, where they see themselves voting, that's fine. I would prefer that if we could have this discussion now and actually take a vote tonight rather than to have this, you know, go on for another, almost three weeks. And I think that's fair to Reese. She's waited a long time for us to develop the policy to, you know, have her, you know, have her proposal vetted. Came back, I think this was the third iteration of her proposal. And she didn't give up. She kept coming back until it did our policy requirements. And I think we owe her a discussion and a vote. So on that, I will open the floor. Len has his hand raised.
Yeah, I just have some questions, not any comments. Looking at the flag, as it's, and it's, my printer, I guess, doesn't do color. Sorry, that's bad. The Black Lives Matter flag on the right-hand side, I'm assuming that's the portion that's designated for the LGBT part as well? I mean, what I see this as, my question is, this is two flags. And I'm not complaining. I'm just saying, that's what I'm seeing here, right?
Um, I just want to let you know that the rainbow is not just general LGBTQ. It is black LGBTQ. And you cannot support Black Lives Matter without supporting the black LGBTQ, which is the people of the black LGBTQ community, especially black trans women, are being killed at a higher rate than anyone else right now in that black community. That's why that is there. And it is so important that we support those people because those are the people who are dying the fastest.
And I'm not questioning why it was there. I just wanted to make sure. As I said, I can't tell. My other question, under transferable skills that apply, and again, maybe I just don't understand this. It says M-S-T-R-R-I-C, responsible and involve citizenship, M-S-T-R-R-I-C point three, demonstrated commitment to community health and wellness. What does, what do those letters mean? I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Adrian, would it be okay if I just?
I was just going to ask you, Dave, if you would clarify because it looks like the, you know, very educatory stuff.
It's educatory stuff. Yeah, Len, so if you think about like the state standards that we're accustomed to in schools, that's the, that's the agency of ed's kind of classification coding system just for labeling. We have state standards that are labeled that way, but those are also the transferable skills that come to us from the state. So they're just the indicators for us. Is it like number one or number two or number three? Does that make sense as I?
So the skills are responsible and involve citizenship and demonstrating commitment to community health and wellness.
That is correct. That is correct, yep.
Just to clarify. Len, does that answer your question?
Well, not completely. And I'm not trying to push it. I just, what does M-S-T-R-R-I-C mean? Transferable skills that apply? Are those specific transferable skills set by the state?
Yes, sir. So those are set by the state. I'm going to guess, I don't have that code in front of me, but I'm going to guess the TR stands for transport, transferable skills.
Yeah.
The IC may link to something that's actually in that descriptor. Like, that's, that's how they set it up, just to organize that list of skills.
Okay. And again, I just, I guess I've been out of education for too long. I don't understand that code. All right. Thank you.
I'm sure you weren't alone. I'm sure other people would like to speak to this proposal. Doug?
Oh, Sam, we're on. Okay. Those of you that have been here since before and were with the board when we voted on this last year, know the vote that I put through was the only no vote that was within the school district. And it's probably going to be at least the only no vote this year also. I have, I have been an adoptive father for, of six kids, five of which were kids of color. All went through Mill River Schools. All had problem with through Mill River Schools. They have been here in this building approximately 18 years or so from the start of, the oldest, who had an issue and was actually killed because of, because some of the racist stuff that was there. His two younger brothers spent some time in jail and had some legal problems also because of that. My two daughters seem to have been okay here, but there were still issues on and off. And I firmly believe that Black Lives Matter flag is not going to make a difference there. Do we need to do something? We need to, yes, we do. We need to do something. But an organization that thrives on the injuries and the damages that they do. Last year, they were responsible for 93% of the deaths and the buildings that were damaged, the other things that were there. They took a ownership of six blocks in a town. I think it was Seattle. It was in Washington anyway, and kept it for three months. And pretty much tore that whole thing apart. The buildings that they damaged, a lot of them were either police stations or federal courthouses, which, by the way, everybody I'm looking at here and plus everybody that's listening, we're going to have to pay for those to have those rebuilt. And being the 93%, by the way, that was over a three-month period just last summer. They did the same thing, maybe not quite as bad. Let me rephrase that. They didn't do as bad here, but they disrupted those wanting to protest in the same time with them, twice, once in Mount Perrier and once in Burlington just this last summer. Can we research and do something better? Absolutely. Being against somebody just because of the color of their skin is just not there. It has to be changed. It needs to be changed. I'm a firm believer that that flag poll went up in 1975 with the federal flag and the state flag. And I think it needs to stay that way. And I will be voting no for this. Thank you.
Maria, you have your hand up. And then I'll move down the line.
Thanks, Adrian. I want to thank Reese for coming to our meeting and for sticking by this over the past year since she brought it to us the first time. That takes a lot of courage and a lot of dedication. And I think that we should listen to her and that we should trust that she's done a lot of work on this and that she has the support of fellow students and fellow educators in this district. And I, I hear what you say, Doug, and I agree that this alone is not going to fix all the problems that we have. But this will help. It'll help. It'll help give a visual support to people in our district. And I think it's still important for us to do. As a reminder, for those of us that aren't affected so directly by racism, even though we all are affected, and as a support to our students who are directly affected by this. So I fully support this proposal. And thanks again, Reese, for coming.
Thank you, Maria. Matt, your hand is up.
Reese, thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate hearing your speech. I know you've been very determined with this and you've stuck with it. And that determination does not go unnoticed. That being said, you know, there's struggles for lots of different people. I grew up Jewish. I grew up Jewish at Woodstock Union High School. I used to get called horrible names because I was Jewish. I'm not going to repeat those names. I got beat up for being Jewish. I got teased for being Jewish. I had people taunt me in the hallways for being Jewish. You don't think of Woodstock as being a town full of hate, but there was a lot of hatred towards Jewish people in that school. And I carry a lot of trauma for that. And I've carried it for years. You know, some people say I associate with the Republican Party, which is full of, you know, they supposedly, you know, neo-Nazis and antisemics and things like that. But, you know, we, you know, it is what it is at this point. And, you know, I really enjoyed your speech until you got to the part where you referred to us as angry white people. I'm a pretty easygoing guy. I've been through a lot in my life. I like to hear people's stories. I like to try to find common ground. That's who I am as a person. But one thing I am not is an angry white person. So, thank you.
Um, I'm sorry that happened to you growing up, but please do not equate your religious, your religious oppression to my racial oppression. This is something that I go through every single day. And I'm still dealing with it. And it's very obvious that I'm still dealing with it because I have to sit in front of the board and beg to raise a flag for my life to fucking matter. I'm sorry for my language, but this is so heartbreaking to see.
BJ?
Let me give Reese a moment because she deserves it. She's worked hard at this. And I commend her for that greatly. And I thank her for sticking through this. This whole process has taken a long time. And I got to admit, I have learned an immense lot, a lot about the process. And that was one of the points why we wanted to fly this flag is to learn. And I would not have learned this without the request coming a year ago. Some things that I've learned. First of all, I've heard people, I've heard opposition to this because they don't want to fly anything except the US flag and the Vermont flag on the flag poll. I'm going to be honest to say, I personally probably agree with that statement. But something that I think matters more is that through our policy, we gave that choice to our students. So our decision needs to be made about whether this particular flag is going to be flown on the flag poll and should not have anything to do with whether or not we believe or not believe that any flag should be on there. Second thing is I've seen the Black Lives Matter flag in three different ways. I've seen it represent demographics. Reese, I have several friends who represent it under demographics. I've seen it as a representation against systemic racism. And I think that is something that it really does stand for. And if you look at it that way. I've also seen it represented as extremism. And Doug, you pointed that out. To those who look at it as an extremism, look at the Capitol riots and look at the American flags and look at the, I watched, I literally watched a police officer get beat by the flag, the blue line flag that's supposed to represent them. There's extremism everywhere. And I don't think that should at all take away from the demographic representation and the systemic racism that this flag does represent to those people. Lastly, I will say that I'm going to fully support this. And it has nothing to do with anything I've learned there. I'm going to fully support it because my daughter. a ninth, now ninth grader at Mill River, has asked me to. And that to me is one of the most important things.
Thank you, BJ. Liz?
I want to start by saying, well, thanking Reese for your leadership, your tenacity and your courage. You are a role model, not just for your peers, but for us as adults. And I want to remind everybody on this call tonight that or ask that you consider that anti racist work, in my opinion, and in the opinion of people engaged in anti racist work, should really not be the work of people of color. All right. I actually wrote a statement and I wrote it like a month ago when I knew this was coming down the pike. I believe that standing up for black lives is a moral imperative. To me, citing the movement for black lives Marxist roots as reason to reject it is the exact oppression against which the movement is fighting. We cannot tell an oppressed group how they can or cannot protest their oppression. That is oppressive. It's supremacist. At its origin, Marxism was a way to understand the relationship between capitalists and the working class in nineteenth century Germany. It was a white working class theory of class struggle. As an ideological influencer of the movement for black lives today, it is a way to understand oppressive relationships between people in power and marginalized persons, whether people of color, indigenous persons, women, non cisgendered and non heterosexual persons, persons with disabilities, immigrants, migrant workers and the poor. It is its gender lens that sets it apart from traditional Marxism. But I digress. We have a biracial student asking an all white board to stand in solidarity with a movement to value lives like hers and lives that in the United States have historically been oppressed, terrorized even. Housing data, food security data, educational access data, social mobility and equity data, health and healthcare outcome data and rates of incarceration tell us clearly that people of color face disparate experiences of equity and justice in this country. To even deliberate, to even deliberate whether or not we would stand in solidarity with a historically marginalized population of people is a form of domination. To not support flying the Black Lives Matter flag is, in my opinion, an act of supremacy. Why do we have to fight this hard for racial justice? Why? I am unequivocally in favor of supporting this proposal. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz. Len?
My only statement would be. And Reese, I appreciate and respect you immensely. And I have no idea how difficult it's been for you as an individual and I guess I'm sorry for that because I can't be there. I don't know that. And I recognize that. My concern is the last time when we were here talking about this, the community became upset because they felt, or at least I, people told, people in the community told me they were upset that they did not have an opportunity to present their feelings, to present their opinions. And I, and I think, believe it or not, we're sitting here tonight seeing the results of that in some way, shape or form. And, and I don't know, some of you may not understand what I'm talking about. Some may not. So I, I do think we need to allow time for the communities to provide input on this. I know, I understand it's the board's decision. And it's our decision alone. A year ago, we were at this point. And it was said that it was our decision. There were two things the community could do. They could vote down the budget or they can change the board. They didn't vote down the budget.
With all due respect, everyone has had their time. I have jumped through every single hoop, every single obstacle. It has been a year and it's time now.
That's fine. And, and all I'm saying, and I respect that, Reese, but all I'm saying is.
They had. This isn't a conversation. I'll call on you again, I promise. Okay, but we can't do this. Len, finish your comment, please.
I just think we need to provide the opportunity. I know it was warned today that it was going to be. We were going to bring it up tonight. And I know there's people out there that are here specifically for that purpose. I just. Okay, I'll make a motion that we table the decision on raising the flag until our next meeting. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Andrea? Is there discussion? Maria, please. Maria, I can't hear you.
I took my hand down, but I didn't turn it off. I, I, I think we should vote tonight. We are all here. And that is, and the meeting was warned and we have had public comment on the, on the subject. We had plenty of public comment at the beginning. We also heard an abundance of public comment a year ago, well, a little less than a year ago, after we had the original one. And I would like to bring to everyone's attention that overwhelmingly that public comment was in support of us flying the flag.
Are you finished? I, I want to make a, a, one, one comment and I. I know normally the chair doesn't, doesn't do that, but I would like to point out that this meeting was warned. This item was on the agenda and I would like to point out that probably some of the people that are not here to speak are at a meeting in Rutland. Matt, you have something to say to add?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if this is appropriate or not, but I do remember during public comment that Gail Gillum had asked a question about the flag policy and I didn't know if Dave was comfortable answering that or not. Because I, I, I don't know, I was just going to ask.
I'm not, could, could you reclarify what her question was? Because I don't remember exactly what she said about the, she said she was going to send an email and I, I, so I didn't write it down.
It, it was something to do with the student, whether they're a current student or not. I don't, I don't remember. I apologize. I just, I remember.
No, I understand what you're saying now and, and the, the proposal has been vetted and sent to us because it met our criteria.
That's fine. Yep, thank you.
That was why I asked Dave in the beginning to say, has this gone through all the proper policy? Okay, I'm clarifying for everybody, Matt. Thank you. Are there other comments? Before we vote on Len's motion?
Is Andrea's hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry. She is and. Into your lightish wall. I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Adrian. So I just have, so now that I've seconded Len's motion to postpone it to the next meeting for decision. My concern, and I hear, I've just been sitting back, listening to everything. And I wasn't a part of what it happened a year ago. So I'm a little lost in certain aspects where it was initially started. Was there ever a risk assessment done for the school as far as students either of color or of non color? With flying the flag being, not flying the flag being a risk for of colored students or a risk assessment done if the flag does fly for people of non color. I guess that's what my concern would be. Have we looked at all the options there? And all of the, you know, all of what may, the, you know, not the consequences, but all of the factors that will factor into if we fly or if we don't fly. I, this may be where I have not been a part of this since the beginning. So please help me clarify.
I, I'm not sure I, I understand exactly what you're, what you're asking, Andrea. I don't, I, I guess the answer is no, nobody did a risk assessment. I, I don't know if we've ever done a risk assessment for anything, to tell you the honest truth.
Can we? If we're doing the motion to postpone us to the next meeting, I don't know. Dave may have to answer, how long does it take to do a risk assessment? And is there enough ample time before the next meeting to do something so that we can have that information for the final decision? That's just.
Yeah, Andrea, with, with all due respect, your question is incredibly complex. I don't fully understand the direction and what I think I understand about it greatly concerns me if the concept is that the board is contemplating an action and the board would ask us to have an assessment done on how that action would affect specific groups of students and comparing those groups of students to each other. There, there's, there's some, some challenging dynamics there that I don't know I would recommend the board engage in, but you're, you're the folks who are in charge of this operation.
So I guess I'm more thinking that.
Andrea? I'm actually, I want to jump in here.
Yeah.
In terms of risk, I, I just want to go back to a comment that Reese made. She asked for this flag to come out knowing that it was going to be controversial. She felt that controversialness full bore. I mean, just absolutely. I commend you, Reese, for sticking through this. And yet she stuck with it to ask us again. So in terms of a risk assessment, there was a risk. It was taken. It showed, it brought a lot of color, coloration to our community. And it was still asked again. So I really, in terms of risk, yes, it's there, but I think it's a risk that those who put their names on the bottom of this and the, like people like my daughter who support these type of initiatives, know we need to take. Does that help at all?
Yeah, yeah, kind of. It does make it a little, I just, I guess I'm. My concern as, you know, having a student there that's going to be in eighth grade who is not of colored, how he, how it would affect the population that may not be involved with flying the flag and safety that way, like threats and I, I guess, all right, I. They kind of, BJ, do you get what I'm trying to go at a little bit?
What you're coming through? I'm. I worry.
I mean, do you, I worry.
I worry all the time, but I think it is immensely important that we support those who statistically have been marginalized. And it's a fight and this is just one step that we've had to take. So I, I just wanted to kind of remind you of the fight that had to happen by someone who is in this group just to get here and the risk that they had to take and obviously legitimately had to endure.
Well, and I, yeah, I understand that. I've known Reese for a really long time and yeah, so I understand all of that. I know all of everything that has been going on with her and, you know. So, okay, I guess I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Have your hand up.
I actually think Bruce had his hand up ahead of me and I'd be happy to speak after he speaks.
Thank you. Bruce, go ahead. I thought so. Maria's first.
Okay. I was not, I was teaching when this was going on. I was oblivious to this whole Black Lives Matter flag discussion, believe it or not. I was, I was tuned out. So I did my research. I went back and looked it up, looked up things that happened, things that were said, the meetings were back in, in the spring and June. And apparently there were some threats called in or emailed in. And I'm looking at E four policy, risk management. It says, no new program, policy or procedure will be adopted or approved by the board without first giving careful consideration to the school system's risk exposure. And so I guess the question is, is the school's risk exposure? It's not, it's not Reese's, it's not a white kid or a black, it's the school's exposure. If somebody did call in a bomb threat and that happened, have we, have we talked with insurance companies? This might have to do with camp. I've got to all sorts of risk exposure and, and policies. So that's the question that's out there. If it's been done, it's been done. If it hasn't been done, then we're violating a policy. And Adrian said it hadn't been done.
Adrian did say that, but she also disagrees that the risk management policy is attributable to this, but, but we can, we can.
I'd like to call the question.
Bring that up.
I would like to have a chance to speak first, please, Len.
Go ahead, Maria.
Thank you. I hear people's concern. And I know this is a complicated topic and I know that identifying as a white person when people are saying that they don't feel safe around white people can make you feel uncomfortable. And has made me feel uncomfortable in the past. And the risk here that we're concerned about is the risk to our students who are dealing with. I, I'm not going to say this as well as I'd like to, but dealing with racist nonsense all the time, our students and people of color in Vermont. And there are other schools in Vermont who have put up the Black Lives Matter flag and it has been a source of education and support and growth for those schools where it has happened. It's happened in Mount Imperial. It's happened in Rutland. I'm not, I'm not sure of all the schools where it has been, but we aren't the first school to do this. And I'd like to just remind us of what Joan Latuca said during public comment because that really struck a chord with me is that we need to, we need to prepare our students for the broader world. And this is part of that. This is, this is to support our students of color and it's to educate our entire community. So I believe that we, all, the whole board is here right now. We may not all be able to make it at the next meeting and I think that we should vote for this now. So thank you all.
Has everybody had opportunity to speak to Len's motion? Okay, seeing no hands, I will call that question, which is to delay the vote until the next meeting.
You'll probably have to do a roll call.
Thank you. Say, I'm going to do a roll call and I'm just going to move across my screen. BJ? No? Matt? Matt, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Maria?
No.
Doug?
No.
Don't delay, Doug?
No.
Okay, thank you. Liz?
No.
See, Bruce?
Yes.
Len? Len? Len, did you hear me?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Andrea?
Yes.
Sam?
No.
Asha?
No.
I'm voting no. The motion does not pass. We are back to discussing the Reese's proposal for a flag.
What were the numbers on that? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I had eight noes to three, three yeses.
No, seven to four, Adrian, seven to four.
Oh, I missed a yes, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Sorry. Okay. So BJ has his hand raised. And then Sam?
Yep. I'm willing to make a motion, but I want to have a comment first. And the only thing in the proposal I would like to discuss further before I say I would make a motion is the time estimated, the timeframe. And so can I make a motion and then have the discussion about the timeframe? Or should I wait, looking for advice?
Either way, you can make a motion and we can discuss.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposal as Reese has given us with further discussion of, with further refinement of the timeframe.
There a second? Sam, thank you. Okay, that opens that BJ's motion up for discussion. Perhaps you want to go further on the timeframe BJ, to start your, your, what you were concerned about.
Well, in the proposal, she says as soon as possible, hopefully by the end of the year. Obviously that is not going to happen. I know, I would love to see it up at the beginning of the year with a reevaluation, like three months in, would be my suggestion, I guess. Yeah, I would, I'd be open to those suggestions too. I'm just, I just literally threw out a number.
Okay. Dave, I only have one screen. Are you looking at the flag policy by any chance? Len, I'll get you. I just wanted to clarify one thing before.
Adrian, give me a moment and I will get that pulled up.
Okay, go ahead. I just.
I haven't.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, only the main flag pole at Mill River will be utilized. The poles' flags may be flown for a maximum of three months duration, determined by the school board. The board may remove a previously approved flag at any time.
I guess it wasn't so random.
No, not at all.
It was subconscious.
Well, you're the policy guy, so you should know that.
So what we are voting on is a three-month flying of the flag initially and, and anyone can come back and, and reapply and, and, and say, I'd like to fly it longer if another flag comes in. I mean, all of that is open, but our policy says for an initial three-month period at a maximum.
And from the start of the year, from the day one.
You are suggesting the start of the year because it seems silly to do it in the middle of summer. Okay. Um, Bruce, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. We're talking about the flag policy and supporting a policy. But we have another policy that was approved June 11th, 2016. It says there has to be a risk assessment. If you approve the flag policy tonight, without that risk assessment, you are violating policy.
Bruce, would you read that policy for us out loud? And then I would like the board to take, to take a notion as to whether or not that is a, a policy that is applicable in this situation.
Well, I would read the last minutes. I just, I did. I could read the whole thing.
Okay.
The last minute says, "No new program, policy, or procedure."
No, I asked you to read the policy. The policy at least started at the beginning, so people.
Yeah, I'll do that. I'll do that.
Thank you.
"It's the policy of the district to minimize risk to the district as it discharges its responsibility for properly managing the resources of the school system. This responsibility includes concern for the safety of the students, employees, and the public, as well as concern for protecting the system's property from loss. No new program, policy, or procedure will be adopted or approved by the board without first giving careful consideration to the school system's risk exposure. It seems like that has to be done and can't be done generically right now."
How, well, I guess I would ask the board for opinions on how something like that would be even accomplished other than our not assuming that somebody will do something horrible to our school because we fly a flag in honor of people that suffer from discrimination. Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to share and Stan may want to jump in if I'm on the wrong track, but it is my understanding that this policy that's being referenced refers to fiscal risk, does not refer to physical risk. So this is about fiscal dollars risk. Stan, I don't know if you want to add to that or, or if I'm on the wrong track, feel free to let me know.
No, you're on the right track with that because it isn't with the financial policies.
Okay, so that's a consideration in our, in our vote for the future if you, if, um, when we, when we take a vote on, on BJ's motion.
Well, when it says concern for the safety of students, that's not fiscal.
This policy is about fiscal risk. It's in the fiscal policy section. That is what it's geared towards. It's required to be in place in order to comply with insurance requirements, et cetera.
Bruce, we, we heard your comment and if people find that, that, that a reasonable reason to vote no, then, then they will do so. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comment before I call the question? Okay, I'm going to call.
Sam?
Sam Green has a comment.
Okay. Raise your hand, but yes.
No, I, I used the thing and then I took it down. No, it's, it's tricky. Yeah, you never know whether to raise your virtual hand or your real hand.
Please.
I'm sitting here thinking a lot about how much representation matters. It's hard when you don't have images and representation in all sorts of the things that you're consuming in your life, be you a student or a grown-up, like all of us are sitting here. When you can't see yourself reflected in the people that you admire, the people you're surrounded with. And you know, we, one small thing that we can do is at least put up a token of appreciation, something that says you do matter. Matter is the absolute minimum that any of our students can feel at any school in this country, much less in this beautiful state that means so much to all of us in this district that we care so much about for these individual students who are willing to risk the feelings that I'm feeling right now, talking to a board of my peers, students that have waited longer than one year to know that, yeah, for three months, we'll put up a flag and you're going to have tough conversations at home. That's part of being a family. That's part of being a community member. That's again, right, why we're all different. It's going to bring up some really hard conversations. And maybe, you know, none of us can empathize specifically with what it means to be a person of color. But I know all of us, right, we've had hurt, we've been at the hands of something that was unjust, unfair, and untrue, maybe even about who we are as a person. We were held to a different standard because of something. You know, I, I might have one of the most obvious differences in that represent, as a representative on this board. I struggle every day with not seeing all the time images that represent me and that is not equal to Reese's struggle and a struggle of all the other people of color at all. But it is a pretty close sympathize, that the least I can do as I benefit from a lot of other privilege in my life. You know, is the quote, "We lift as we rise." Either you take the things that people did to you and you learn from them and you grow from them and we are supposed to make this better for those that come next. Things shouldn't be harder for you and I am so, so, so sorry that they have been and that in some ways they will continue to be. So if I can put a flag up for three months and if I can be a yes voice on that, that feels like the least I can do. Thank you all for your consideration as we vote on this overdue and small first step of many. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, last call for comments.
I think Asha had her hand up.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate everybody that tells me, no problem.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll keep this very short. I would ask all of my fellow board members to reflect on fairness and what that means to you. To me, compassion plays a role in my calculation of fairness. Thank you.
Thank you, Asha. Len?
Sam, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call the question if I don't see any more hands raised. All right, we're voting on BJ's motion to clarify that the flag would fly at the beginning of the school year for three months. Unless, okay, all right, I'm going to do a roll call. BJ?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Matt, Maria?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Thank you, Doug. Liz?
Yes.
Bruce?
No.
Len?
No.
Andrea?
No.
Sam?
Yes.
Thank you, Sam. Asha?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm voting yes. We have three no, no votes and eight eleven, or eight yes votes. The total 11. The motion passes, the flag will fly at the beginning of school for three months. Thank you very much. That was, that was hard work, people, and I, I appreciate everybody staying patient and, uh, and working through this. Now we have.
Matt has his hand up, Adrian.
Thank you. Again, thank you. Everybody just pointed out. Go ahead, Matt.
I'd like to just make one statement and I have a yes for this flag. And honestly, when I came into this meeting, I did not intend to vote yes for this flag. And I see this as a learning experience where differences can come together. And my, I brought up a situation from my past of being Jewish and being tormented for being Jewish. And it was very difficult for me to talk about this because I don't like to get emotional. I don't like to talk about my past. And I noticed that Reese got a little bit defensive when I brought it up. And I hope that this can be a learning experience for everybody that no matter how big or small your problem may seem, it should ever be minimalized. And I just want this to be a situation of everybody coming together. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt. That was, that was lovely. And I see Kim joined us. Oh, Len, go ahead.
Just a quick, now put it on the agenda, I guess we could put it on the agenda for later, is just to plan how it's going to work, because I think that's an important piece of the whole thing. If this is going to be an educational experience for the students and the community, then I think we really need to advertise it, let folks know that we're doing it and invite members of the community to come in and, and see it. So, but we can talk about that later, but I think it's important to do that.
I think you're right. And I, I, I was going to put it on the agenda for, for the next meeting because I think we want to bring the Equity Committee into this. And there's, there's a, a number of things that, that should go into this, but thank you for bringing that up. But again, welcome, Kim. And it looks like we have junior Kim?
Thanks, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Wait, you gotta hold that baby up. I can't see you.
Thank you. I thought I was going to be goofy and ask for that.
Ah, no, no, no. All right.
What a cutie. You've obviously been feeding well.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Dave, are you or Kim leading the Athletic Program Integration Administrative Proposal?
I think we're going to do it kind of cohesively. I'll, I'll make some opening comments on it and turn it to Kim and we can kind of bounce back and forth if that's okay. Before, before we go there though, I'm going to just seize the opportunity to say that, you know, watching the board deliberate a challenging and difficult question, you know, that, that's, that's, that's a process and it's a challenging process you went through. I said this a year ago and I'll say it again, I believe that our board made the right decision. I believe that making a decision to support all of our students and to utilize symbols that help them to feel supported is important and it's necessary for us to make sure that all students are getting what they need, which is really the simple way to define doing work around equity in schools. I also want to thank and commend Reese because I am confident that this has been a grueling process for her. There's been a lot of waiting, there's a lot of patience and a lot of work and it's challenging, I'm sure, to be a, a person in your teens navigating the, the world of a school board and policies and rules and regulations. And it probably feels hopeless at times. So I do hope that Reese, after this evening, at least sees that she was heard and that, that the board made a decision. That said, again, thanks to everyone for that work. Kim and I have been talking along with Tyler Wedeman and Jen Macklemore, our Assistant Principal at Mill River, been talking for about a year about our athletic programs and thinking about how to make our athletic programs more cohesive from the kindergarten up to 12th grade level. Obviously, you know that we have some sports programs that exist in our elementary schools and we have more formal sports programs in our middle school and high school. A few board members have even had dialogue with me around this topic, like what can we do to bolster and reinforce? And BJ is smiling because he and I have talked about this a lot for several years, actually. We've been, we've been teasing around these concepts a little bit. So Kim and I have worked together on a concept that initially has been presented to the Personnel Committee and the Personnel Committee felt it made sense to bring this to the full board for some discussion. I'm going to share my screen with you if you will give me just a moment to do so. And then I'll adjust the font size just to make sure that you can see it. Can everybody see Mill River Union High School with the logo? Does everybody have that?
Yep.
Perfect. So, you know, I'll just talk you through this. You can read, but I want to just talk you through what this is about. So the goal of this is to consider the variable dynamics of our programs and the variable oversight of our schools that feed into the Mill River program. We're interested in standardizing expectations and oversight for our elementary school programs. Currently at Mill River, just to give you some context, at the middle school and high school level, Mill River is working on including the varsity head coach for each sport as being involved with Kim and the oversight of the specific program where they serve. This would include being part of the hiring process for JV coaches, middle school coaches, assistants, et cetera. The goal is to have a team of coaches that are all pulling in the same direction and working together so that, you know, as our students are coming through the ranks, that they are operating in familiar systems with familiar expectations from coaches and we, we be as unified as possible. Just to give you current status, it, it does vary in each of our elementary schools. At Wallingford Elementary, we currently have a basketball program in the winter that serves level, grades five and six. Clarendon has the most offerings and some of Clarendon's offerings serve and are open to students from all of our district schools. So we have a, a really great district cheerleading program that serves all students in our elementaries that's based out of Clarendon, but also have basketball and soccer. And that soccer program at Clarendon is intended to serve students from all district schools as well. Shrewsbury, just prior to COVID, had initiated a basketball program that was up and running. And then, as you can see, Shrewsbury students participate in soccer cheerleading through Clarendon. And there's some community-based baseball, not Clarendon Elementary base, but community-based baseball that is also loosely linked up with Clarendon. And Timoth, similar. Timoth students have the opportunity to participate in Wallingford and Clarendon sports and recreational programs. The proposal that, that we've worked up for you is basically, this is what we're thinking. First, we'd like for the Mill River Athletic Program to play a role in the hiring processes for coaches at the elementary level for the various sports teams. That would probably look like Kim as the Mill River Athletic Director, the elementary school principal, a varsity head coach for that sport, who would be the, the actual sport expert in the conversation. And in some cases, like at Clarendon, we do have someone who's assigned to athletic coordination responsibilities. In some cases, you might have an athletic coordinator be a part of that process. In some cases, you might have an athletic coordinator be a part of that process. To ensure that we begin where kids begin their love of sport, we would wanna, we wanna hire elementary coaches that will teach the fundamentals and be a part of that broader district team. Mill River varsity coaches would meet with those elementary coaches prior to the beginning of the seasons. We would have things be as integrated as possible. Kim is the, excuse me, as the Athletic Director would facilitate that process. And we really would wanna look at consistent expectations, protocols, procedures, et cetera. We do have some sports that don't exist in our own sports programming, namely baseball, softball, and football at the elementary levels. There are recreational sports in town for those various, various sports. But our baseball and softball coaches in particular have expressed willingness to conduct fundamentals camps throughout the school year. So giving kids the opportunity to engage even in sports that we don't currently offer officially, provide them a camp type of experience. At Mill River, the Athletic Director supervises and evaluates the coaches at the end of the season. The Athletic Director does consult with varsity head coaches when preparing JV and middle school coach evaluations, getting their input regarding program needs for the season. And then varsity head coats, coaches do evaluate their assistant coaches. And then finally, elementary coach supervision would be conducted by the elementary school principal officially, but it would be worked on jointly with the elementary principal and the Mill River Athletic Director, who has the athletic expertise. And input from varsity head coaches who've been engaging with the elementary coaches could be included as a part of that process. So I think it would make sense if I, if I paused here and turned to Kim and let Kim just kinda talk to you about her perspective on this, because you, you will want to hear from her, like, hey, Kim, you agree with this? Does this make sense? Would this be a good way to organize this? And then the two of us would love to just take any questions or feedback you may have. Ultimately, we are, you know, this to me doesn't feel so much like a thing that we would be asking you to take action on, but we are in many ways just looking for consensus from the board, like, yeah, this seems like a good idea, a good way to organize our internal systems. So go ahead, folks, makes sense to us. That's ultimately what we'd be seeking from this conversation, whether that happens tonight or at a future meeting. We can, we can adapt depending on the timing. But, Kim, I'll turn to you. Would you mind talking a little bit about your, your perspective on this?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Dave. So, and, and really just this past fall season and winter season, we've had the sixth graders at the local elementary schools be a part of our middle school programs in order to field some teams at our middle school levels. And as some of you may know, we have really struggled to field JV programs. I'll be starting my eighth year here in Mill River, and JV has been nonexistent for many of those years. So, you know, really trying to implement this program and starting at the elementary school levels, because the youth programs is where, you know, kids begin to play the sport and where they need to learn the fundamentals before they get to the middle school and high school level. I think having that input from my varsity coaches and, and having them implement what they want to be seen as they, those students come up through the program can be really beneficial for our athletic program. You know, there are people out there that say that our athletic program's going down the tubes, and, and it is what it is, and the numbers, and, but you know, it really all starts at the youth level, and that's what all of my coaches at the varsity level, I've been really trying to work with. This past year, COVID didn't help that. Now with some of those restrictions lifted, my basketball coaches are really excited to get back into the gym and work with those youth-level students and their own, you know, athletes before their season starts for, you know, fall or winter. So I really just see this as more of a building block at our elementary school levels. And Dave and I have, have talked about, you know, like I said, we, the sixth graders this past winter supported our winter basketball teams from middle school. And to tell you the truth, you wouldn't even have known they were sixth graders. They, they meshed right, right in with our seventh and eighth graders. And it was really nice to see that integration because they are gonna be at Mill River next year. You know, and, and that's something else that we can look at, you know, middle school, VPA, middle school is five through eighth grade, or fifth through eighth grade. So those students can participate in our middle school programs where we see fit. Obviously, we don't wanna put students out there that can't compete or put them in a dangerous situation. So this is where, you know, Dave and I have talked about this, I think, for some, you know, eight years I've been here, probably a couple of conversations a year about this. And now that we've kinda put this on paper and looked at it, I think this will be really beneficial for the whole athletic community and athletic programs.
I would like to say, just following up on Kim's comments there, and I, I wanna say this publicly because I don't want someone to interpret this, this way. What Kim is describing, our sixth graders helping out our middle school athletics programs and supplementing, is not a sneaky backdoor way for us to move all of our sixth graders into the middle school at Mill River. That's a conversation that was had several years ago. That's a conversation that has not been revisited, and we have no intentions to revisit that anytime in the immediate future. So I just want to be clear that Kim is talking about sports and sports in particular.
Thank you. There were a bunch of hands raised, and I can't see most of them. I just saw little messages. I know Maria had raised her hand, and Liz has her hand raised, and I can't see anybody else. Oh, thank you, Dave.
Yeah, that helps.
Okay. So Maria first.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Kim, for coming to our meeting, and thanks, and welcome back. If you're back, I don't know if you're all the way back yet. I think this is a great idea. I really like the idea of sixth graders being being completely behind it and at risk of being whatabouting. I, I, I want us to keep in mind the arts, because we have hired a arts, like, we, we do wanna coordinate arts through our K through 12, because Mill River, we're known for that. And I don't wanna take away from athletics, because I think that's really important. It's not my realm, it's not what I understand, but I support it. Arts is where my attention generally is a little bit more, and I think that we need to keep an, we need to have a, maybe a similar plan for supporting or helping communication anyway amongst all the arts programs.
Yeah, to that point, Maria, Kristen Simonetti, who's been appointed as our K through 12 Arts Coordinator, is, is developing exactly that type of approach and strategy. So there will be a time, there'll be a time that we'll be able to bring a similar, you know, proposal to you for, for you to hear.
Okay, I can't wait to hear about it. And thank you again, Kim.
Great. Good news all around. Liz, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm kinda giggling over here, just because I went to a small school, and I played four years of varsity soccer, and it wasn't because I was really, really good. It was because we couldn't field the JV team. But I love telling people, oh, yeah, I played four years of varsity soccer. Anyway, I absolutely support this plan. I would like for Dave, sorry, there's a cat in my lap. I would like for Dave to explain a little bit for my own edification, for the edification of my board members and for my fellow board members and for, you know, public education. Can you explain, because as someone who taught in the Rutland City Schools, I knew at least two Wallingford kids who went to Rutland City for girls hockey, right? And I was curious about that. I was like, you know, I found out basically that whereas when I was younger and kids maybe go to Mill River and play hockey at Rutland, that that's no longer the case. Now it's, if you wanna play hockey for Rutland, you also have to do your academics there. And Dave, can you talk to us and the public a little bit about how school choice works? Because I know we have some, there's some movement for school choice. Is that correct? And so some of our district kids might be accessing that program for sports. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, sort of. Thanks for the question, Liz. That's a loaded question. I'm gonna do my best with it.
Can I, I wanna add one more thing before you answer.
I don't know if I can handle anymore. What, what else you got, though?
You got this, Dave. You got this. And part of the reason I'm asking is because I want everybody to remember that this is about what's best for kids, right? I live in the Mill River District. I live in Wallingford because I wanted my children to go to Mill River, okay? I moved here 20 years ago before I had kids, and I moved to this district for the academics, right? So I, I just want us all to remember that this is about what's best for our kids. If they wanna go play hockey, they have that option. If they want to do something else and they, you know, they're, can you just explain how that all works so that people understand? So to Kim's point earlier, you know, there is this narrative that, like, things are going down the tubes, and I just don't see it. I hear it, but I don't see it and I don't feel it. So I just want people to understand what's, what might actually be happening.
Yeah, you bet. So I'm gonna try to give, uh, this may take a little while, so I ask you to bear with me, and I'll do my best to, to meander through the details to make them understandable. If I, if I get wonky on you, just somebody wave a hand and reel me back in. So first, it's important to talk about the word "choice." You know, in Vermont, choice exists in different forms. There are towns that have a designated high school or a designated school, and there are towns that do not. We are in a school district where we have four communities, all of which have a designated high school, which is Mill River, which means that the, the students in our towns naturally attend Mill River as the assignment from living in those towns. There are other towns next door, for example, Middletown Springs is a good example, that does not have a seven through 12 school. So students who are in grade seven through 12 in Middletown Springs are what are referred to as tuition towns. So those towns, because they don't have a school that covers a grade level, those towns pay the tuition for students to attend essentially the school of choice that they have. That's tuition choice. So Middletown kids might attend Mill River, they might attend Burn Burton, they might attend Slade, I'm sorry, Fairhaven, you know, some of them might go to, to Rutland even. You know, they have that choice, and the town, the town school district pays that cost. So that's one piece. That, that's what is often referred to as choice collectively, but I tend to try to use the language tuitioning or tuition choice, because that kinda designates what that is. The other angle on that is what's called public high school choice. It's 16 VSA 822A, for those of you who wanna get into the statute and, you know, just, just read the language backward and forward. That, that is what establishes the program, that students who have a designated public school can choose to go to any other public high school in the state, given specific parameters. In my personal situation, my two sons, you as a board know that I'm a resident of Arlington. My sons, because of my joy and love for Mill River and my belief that they would do well at Mill River, my boys enrolled in the Public High School Choice Program to attend Mill River for, for their high school period of time. What that means is, as a resident of Arlington, I had to apply at their home school and say, I'd like my children to attend this other public high school. The home district of, of a student has the, the determination on whether or not they can allow those students to leave. In the statute, there are some numbers that control how many kids can go in or out on public high school choice. And the receiving district, in my case, the receiving district for my sons was Mill River, has those same options, where they can, they limit the number of students who come in and out on choice. As long as there's room to leave or come in, schools can allow students to come and go. When those numbers get, get maxed out, that's when, that's when students are not allowed to change schools in terms of public high schools. Now, if we flashback 20, 30 years, there's, there's a very true narrative about Mill River, but when we talk about back in the day when there used to be waiting lists. So back in the day, when, when Mill River was at its peak enrollment, which Len could correct me, but I wanna say was around 800 or so, you know, currently we run between 300 and 400 in the building. So you can just envision how the space was managed. When it was at peak enrollment and Vermont was at peak student numbers, we had 30, 35,000 more students in Vermont in the mid to late 90s. Students that wanted to do that public school choice had to get on waiting lists because the numbers were occupied. They were taken up, so there wasn't enough room. So when we talk about there used to be a waiting list to get in, that's because the school was fuller. There were more kids looking for other places to go, and we don't really run into that situation anymore. Now, a quick side note, we do run into that sometimes with the much smaller schools. So let's imagine a, a school, we won't even come up with a name, but let's say it's a very small high school, like a school that has 150 or 200 students in it, in a nine through 12 school, right? So 50 kids in an entire class, an entire grade level. One of the challenges of a small school is when you don't have enough kids, it's hard to create class offerings, and it's hard to create the, the variability that students need to make their schedules. So smaller schools will tend to limit their numbers more in terms of how many students they'll allow in or out. So I have seen scenarios where a student who's a Mill River student by, by residence says, I'd like to go to small school A, but when they apply to go to small school A, and the reason could be anything, right? Well, my dad went to school there, or it's my best friend goes to school there, or my cousin's there, you know, whatever that reason may be. Small school A might say, we don't have room because we already have too many people coming in, you know, from last year and people who are in front of you on the application process. So that's kinda the big picture. There's tuition choice for schools that don't have, towns that don't have schools, and then there's public high school choice for all the other kids, but there are limits on the numbers. Now, Liz, to get to your original question, when it comes to sports, there are some other dynamics in play. It's common for schools in Vermont to develop school-to-school, or sometimes we call them member-to-member agreements between athletic programs if one school has a program that the other school doesn't. So let's make up an example. Let's say Mill River and High School B, which is a few miles down the road. Let's say Mill River has a lacrosse team, and High School B does not have a lacrosse team. Student from High School B wants to do public high school choice to go to Mill River because they want to play, play on the sports team. That's an option within the public high school choice. Another option is, Kim and the Athletic Director from that high school could work out an agreement that says, yep, we're gonna allow that student to come over and do the sport with us. We have room, it's no problem, we'd be happy to have them. Now, of course, transportation, you know, there's stuff that has to be navigated by the family there. Where it gets challenging is when you have very competitive sports and very competitive sports that have limited roster space. So like, imagine a basketball team as an example. Your average basketball team runs about 12 athletes. Sometimes you'll have a deeper bench of, you know, one or two more kids, but it's hard for a coach to get 14 players on the court during the course of a game. So usually, like, the 10 to 12 range is what you're looking at. So let's imagine that we had a basketball team and that neighboring school did not. We get put into a predicament if somebody wants to come to us and play basketball, but we don't have any space for them. You can get into more of a predicament if a school is concerned that it's going to be a cut scenario, where students try out for a team, and perhaps a local kid who is a resident in that school might be displaced by someone who came from another town and isn't actually attending that school, but just going to that school for the sport. Does that make sense to you? So to get to your question, and I won't name any schools in particular, but when it comes to hockey, which is a very competitive sport, a sport that involves a lot of investment on the family side, a lot of time, et cetera, there are times where students from a school will, that don't have hockey, will want to go to another school that has hockey so they can play on the hockey team, because hockey's been a part of their life. The schools that have the hockey teams, which are very competitive, usually have limited rosters, and there's a lot of intensity around the program, oftentimes say, yep, you can come here to play this sport, but you have to come here. We're not gonna let you just, you know, tack on as just a sport add-on. You've gotta be a student here if you're gonna do that. So there are a number of cases where we've had students who have left Mill River strictly because they've gone to another public high school where there's a sport that's offered that we don't have. And in order to actually participate in that sport, they were required to attend school at that, at that school. I've had conversations with parents who've found themselves in that situation, who said, Dave, we don't wanna leave here, but my child is really invested in this. My child really wants to do this, and I have to do the right thing for them, and I have to give them some choice in the decision. So that's kinda the reality behind it. Liz, I'm gonna ask you if that made sense, and then I'm gonna ask Kim if I screwed anything up with that, with that description at all.
Yes, that made sense, and I wanna give other people, I saw Andrea go up. I have a follow-up question, but I'm gonna let Andrea go first. And Kim, do you wanna, do you wanna clarify anything? But yeah, thank you, Dave.
BJ had his hand up first, actually. BJ, go ahead, and then Andrea.
Dave, I think that was, explanation was great, member-to-member and independent. And we've had multiple students from other schools come to Mill River to participate on teams that their schools have not had, so it goes both ways, for sure.
Thanks, Kim. BJ?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna get back to the proposal, which is the elementary thing. And I know, I didn't expect it to be my thing when I first joined the board, but it was one of my pet projects. And the reason why it was is because my kids got involved in cheerleading, and the cheerleading program became multi-school. So it brought in kids, male and female, from all four of our elementary school programs. And my daughter still has connections from that, and when she went into Mill River. So my support of really building the elementary school programs goes way beyond sports. It's about the student relationships that get built in those programs. And when those kids come together into Mill River. That said, I think this is a great first step. kids come together into Mill River. That said, I think this is a great first step. I would definitely support going even further down the rabbit hole of supporting our elementary schools' sports programs and bringing, so that's where I'm going to go from that one, I think.
Okay, thanks BJ. Andrea, your turn.
Okay, so I think my computer's exhausted. So if I glitch, that's, it's like freezing on me. First, back to like Liz's little thing, Liz's comment about school, students being able to jump to attend one school, but then go to a sport in another school. And I understand Dave's explanation about it and that sometimes the school requires that the student actually be an academic student of them in order to participate in their sports program. So, and I believe I know some of the schools that Dave was referencing to without saying names. If there is a school that does not require that, is there some sort of idea in the back of your minds about helping the students or collaborating a little bit with those schools about maybe for students in sports? And I know some of the schools around us require you to be an academic student at your school, at their school in order to participate in their sports programs. So I didn't know if there was some sort of thought in the back of your head. And then the second thing that I have is just, Kim, totally, I support this nonstop and have thought this from the beginning too. So good luck and if you need anything, let me know.
Thanks, Andrea.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dave, if you're, if you're.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Kim, could you respond? Because I think Andrea's asking if we, if we do the member to member and allow students to engage with other schools. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So like Dave said, without mentioning school names, there are specific sports that we cannot send if a student wants to go to that school to play that sport. We cannot send them there. They have to be a student at that school. If there is a school that has that sport, what usually happens is I reach out to that athletic director who then in turn talks to their coach so we can see if it's even possible with their numbers that they have for a team. Like Dave talked about, we don't want to displace any, any students that are already, or athletes that are part of that school's team. And that's part of the VPA rules as well. But yeah, so if there is room, what we do is we have a member to member and that has to be approved by the VPA. And then both schools keep that on file. And the same thing is for like an independent student, so like a wrestling student, that coach has to have that paper with them in case something comes up out of me and they're challenged as to the student isn't part of your team. They have the paperwork for that. So there's a lot of background work that is involved with the two schools and the VPA to get approval for all of that.
Was there any other comment? Do we need, I guess I've lost my place a little bit. Do we have a motion yet?
You know, actually, Adrian, I mentioned.
Or do we need one? Or it's just an introduction?
I don't know that we need one. We, we're just kind of looking for consensus to like, yeah, everybody thinks this sounds like a good approach.
You haven't heard one negative comment.
Haven't heard one negative comment, that's true.
You want to just have a quick show of hands, guys? Do you think it's a good idea? Okay.
Great. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. We'll get moving on it.
Yeah, thank you, guys. And enjoy. Hope you're sleeping. Okay, um, let's see. We have transact other legal business. Now, I had a community member ask me whether our board would bring up and discuss and possibly issue a declaration of inclusion. Now, I did not answer one way or the other, and I'm bringing it to you as to whether or not, I believe we should, I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. But I didn't want to make that assumption without at least having like a quick show of hands, if that's okay. Okay.
What does that mean?
Um, the inclusion messages have been voted on by a number of select boards and a number of schools. And it is our, if we choose to, to write one and adopt one, our, I guess our acknowledgement and our support of creating a school climate that is inclusive of, of all of our students, all of our community and all of our, I mean, basically all of our students in the community. Now, she also, the community member that submitted it, gave me an example, which I will happily distribute and bring to the next meeting. And I think that would be another helpful conversation for us to have. So I will put that on the agenda. I guess it became more of an agenda item than anything else. So does anybody else have other legal business to discuss? Len, you have your hand up and then Doug.
Yeah, I'm sorry. When we look at that, and I have no opposition to looking at the Declaration of Inclusion, can we also look at our equity policy? Because I don't, I don't want to, I don't think we need to do a whole lot of duplication if, if, and I know lots of places are doing the Declaration of Inclusion. And that's fine. But we also have an equity policy, so I don't want them to be opposing each other in any way. I want them to be inclusive.
Okay, I think that's a very, a very sensible idea. Thank you. And I'll, and I'll make sure that we have both to look at. Doug?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Hopefully be quick. About two, maybe three weeks ago, Adrian, you and I had a conversation and David was involved in that as to what was going to have to happen to graduation, that you were going to need to be there. And I, I give you condolences because I know some of the stuff, but Tyler gave me a, gave me a call on the phone for me to, to step in when you couldn't get there. And the last week and a half has been kind of weird for me from the standpoint of not returning phone calls. And that's one that I didn't, and I regret that I didn't do that. And I want to just give you an apology that, that I told you I would take care of it if something happened and you needed somebody and I didn't do it. And I'm sorry it happened like that. And I will strive to not have that happen again.
I appreciate that, Doug. Thank you.
And, and the other one is actually for the board members because that's one way that the, the school board gets a little pat on the back type of thing for being at a, at a, at a meeting like that, being at a, at a graduation service and doing what we do to, to move kids forwards. That, that's great there. And the second thing, we had a conversation with, with Tim Parent about two months ago. And he's doing a, a thing with the kids, building a, a sugar arch to be able to make syrup. And one thing he's missing would be a storage tank or two. I had a conversation with two people who I remember now, or remembered when I was talking to them, that were both former school, our former members here at the, at the school board. The first one I talked to was Chris Robinson. Chris Robinson about 10 or 12 years ago was one of the starters in the boys' basketball team, varsity. He is now a system manager at the FW Web Company. The second gentleman I talked to was Brian Bradley, who is probably about six years into it now. He's an assistant basketball coach for the boys' varsity basketball. Both of them have talked to their supervisor. And sometime in the next two to three weeks, we should be delivering a 65 gallon storage tank to, to Tim and his guys and he can inlet it to, to what he needs to have to do. It's always good to, to use. I mean, we buy a lot of stuff from them. Those two guys have just, just run around backwards to help me out with this. So I'm, I'm really happy for them. So we'll be doing that in a couple of weeks and I'll let everybody know when that happens.
Thank you, Doug. That's, that's great.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah.
You're welcome. He deserves it. He's doing a good job with kids that aren't learning other things the regular way and he's figuring out a way to help them out.
Yeah.
I gotta help that out.
Seems like an absolutely great program and he was obviously really passionate about it.
I left him a message. I haven't been able to talk to him. Hopefully he hears, he sees a message before he sees this. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I also wanted to add to the agenda and I, I think there's so much conversation going on in the community about critical race theory and who's teaching it and who's not teaching it. And given the, the information that's going around Rutland County, I was hoping that our administrators would come to us with a report addressing that concern clearly and, and for the record, so that, that we have it in our minutes, our public has seen it and they have heard it. So I will be adding it to the minutes. So expect that. And I don't have anything else that I wanted to, I wanted to add. Anybody else? We, we are meeting on the, is it 24th?
26th, Adrian.
He's saying the 24th and I know it's not, but.
I do see Len has a hand up, Adrian, just.
Okay, Len, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to reconfirm that we'll talk about, yeah, what we're going to talk about.
The processes for the flag?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, BJ. That was a long time ago. It seems like weeks.
My papers like got stuff all over it.
Yeah. And then the only other thing, and I just have a question. Are we meeting, if our next meeting is July, whatever, are we meeting in person or not? Or how does that work?
I, go ahead, Dave, but I, I believe that we're, that's the plan.
Yeah, so we have the green light to begin meeting in person. We could have tried to rush it and pull it together tonight, but because of the timing of the governor's executive order being lifted, getting the warnings lined up to keep it legit was challenging. But I would suggest that from here on out, the default can be in person for all of our meetings. That doesn't mean you don't have the ability to hold a virtual meeting. And I have heard of boards actually that have decided they want to continue to meet virtually because they, they like that format. I'm not suggesting you should or should not do that, but I have heard of that. The one catch we need to know is like, let's, let's just make this up, Len. Let's say you decided to do a personnel meeting virtually. If we have a virtual meeting, we do, under the law, have to offer a public place for someone to participate. So just like Doug is at the school tonight, you know, Doug is in the public place. So if members of the public wanted to go to the Mill River Library to watch this meeting, they could. So you got the option to do virtual, but in person is the, is the plan from here on out. And just to cover some dates with you, so you've got the, your retreat activity coming up on the 26th, which is a Saturday, and I'll work with Adrian to make sure that agenda is squared away for everyone and that everything meets the requirements of statute to make sure that everything that has to be public is public. Also, I want to let you know on that, the next board meeting we have, which is the 21st of July, I tentatively have the executive director of the VSBA scheduled to come for training for the board at 6 o'clock before the 7 o'clock board meeting. That will be an open meeting law training. We've all talked about how it would be a good idea to just get everybody on the same page with those details. So we went straight to the VSBA for that. So her name is Sue Seglowski and she'll be with us at 6 o'clock on the 21st.
Len, how does that affect your personnel meeting that you?
Pretty much puts a squash right on it.
I just, because David said.
No, that was.
I forgot about that.
No, 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 that's okay. I think what, what I'll do, and Dave, we'll have to talk because I don't know in terms of what you have for hires. I mean, we've got Shrewsbury and we've got other things going on. So if, if I need to, if we need to call one sooner than that, we, just let me know.
Yeah, what if, Len, what if you and I connect and we could schedule one on a day or so prior to that meeting and that way?
Yeah, and that's fine. Yeah, that'll be fine. Because I, I like to, because you're talking then middle of July, so you kind of want to get it buttoned up.
Yes.
Before we get into August, so.
Andrea, you have your hand raised.
Give me a call.
Thank you.
I do, I just have a question. Since we're going back to the in-person in July and talking about having the option to have a virtual, like if Len wanted to have just strictly a virtual personnel meeting or anything, is there also still the option that if a board member has an emergency and has to be at home during one of our in-person, that they could be virtual and still be attending? I just want to throw that out there. Okay.
I, I do think, but I do want to stress that I think it would be by phone. I'm not sure if we have the capacity to do anything with, that'll be the hangup, because we'll still be taking public comment by phone too. But I don't think we'll have the capacity to have people on screen.
Yeah, it's true. It's, from a tech standpoint, it's tricky. So imagine we're having a committee meeting, you know, in the conference room. And Andrea, you need to be at home and participating virtually or remotely. You know, what that, what that would look like is like Andrea's face on a laptop sitting on the edge of the, edge of the table. And we don't know how good the audio would or would not be for that. We have some precedent, you know, Len does some traveling on an annual basis. And we've often held committee meetings where Len has actually chaired the meetings from the phone while the rest of the group has been gathered. So we would definitely create the option to be away, but just have to manage the tech side of all that.
And I'm just bringing up the fact that we could, like January, February, really miserable nights in December or November. Got to keep these things in mind. So.
That's a big Shrewsbury request.
Well, yeah, I guess. It's, it's just sort of a, wow, it's so nice to not have had to go out into the snow and ice for almost a year, even if it came at a pretty hefty price. So do we have anything else to put in agenda building before we close that out? I mean, you can always write to me if there's something that you, that you want to have on the agenda. Other than that, I don't believe we need an executive session to rule. Bruce, do you have something? Okay. So no executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, I don't think we need to vote on this. Bye, everybody.
See you. Bye.